Okay, my 10 seconds is up. Welcome to our April 28, 2015 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. Dawn, you're at the microphone. What happened today that I just signed that had to be signed by 5:00 PM today? Bond is your hint.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Today, we sold bonds for the St. Xavier construction for the University of Downtown in our Heritage District.
What was the savings? To our town attorney, you just mentioned the savings by having it done.
Mayor, members of the council, I heard in the neighborhood of $80,000.
So if I had signed that after 5 o'clock today? So look, I just saved the town $80,000 by signing?
Well done, Mayor Lewis.
Okay, we'll give everybody the credit. Now, second thing as far as current events, I'm going to pass to all council members. Victor, Councilmember Peterson is calling in. So let me do a play-by-play. I'm taking my town pin off. I'm putting on a new town pin. This is where I need the mayor to...
This is like how to break out the reading glasses.
Yeah, Jared needs a glass. Okay. And this pin has been Zaraized. And for the public who doesn't understand that term, one of the great creative members of our Gilbert team is Zara. And whenever she touches something and it gets Zaraized, it's creative and beautiful and wonderful. So to the town council, the inventory of our prior town pins has depleted. We have new town pins, and they're in stock, and we can share them. And we are about to get started with the agenda item number one, but for some reason, there was a major commotion at Albertson's this morning. The official Gilbert Feeding Families Bag Off started. This is where we have representatives from the federal, state, county, local government compete to see who can put the most groceries in the grocery bags in a minute. Defending champion County Supervisor Danny Barney had won the last two years, and so we were all out to beat him, and he did not win. The winner, County Manager, did you want to talk?
Mayor, did you bring home glory to Gilbert this morning? We're waiting.
Declared the winner, State Representative Warren Peterson. Now, each contestant has a helper. My helper was Councilmember Bridget Peterson. She really helped. She did a tremendous job, and part of it was, the very first bag I got, I slipped and it fell to the ground. And I felt compelled to pick up the groceries. I mean, that's just the Boy Scout in me, so that slows us down. But Bridget was on target, and we were close. We were a very close second. And the key thing is, we're all winners, and so I say this encouraging all of us, the month-long food donation, our food drive is from May, well, it's from right now until May 31st. And the goal, similar to last year, is that with our 72.6 square miles of Gilbert, that we will have 1,000 meals per square mile, and March, or May 31st, we'll have 72,600 meals. There will be Gilbert Feeding Family boxes all over town, town facilities, the businesses, and so we're excited for the month-long competition. And I think we're ready to get to Agenda Item Number One. Vice Mayor Ray is not here, and so I'll conduct this part. This is where if we have items for Thursday night we wanted to have discussed, and let me start with Councilmember Cook. Any items? Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember Daniels? And so I was just talking to Councilmember Victor Peterson on the phone, and I think you had, was it Agenda Item 28? And Victor, were you able to hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Was it, when we were talking a little while ago, was it Agenda Item 28 you wanted to ask about?
It was actually...
Oh, 22.
Agenda Item Number 22, Mayor.
22. Please, we will turn to you for your, the question.
Just simply, I was reading through the mission and vision statement, and I think it's pretty good. The only thing I was thinking about is, we often talk about, you know, having the best possible service, but also at the lowest possible price. Those are terms that we speak in. And I see the part here covered that we want to have the best possible service, but I think everything we do is always cost-conscious. And I just feel like that maybe if there was something added to that effect, I think that would be an improvement, but I don't have any specific language, and I don't intend to write it myself, but I just was curious if conceptually, that there was a majority, if there was a majority of the council interested in maybe adding something to that effect. I just thought I would raise the question.
Thank you. To Councilmember Taylor, would you like to take that assignment and see if, between now and Thursday, if there's any additional phrase or verbiage?
Yeah.
With Mellie at the mic, too?
There you are. Could we work together on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Victor Peterson, thank you. That is Agenda Item Number One, and so we will be together as a council on Thursday night. Let's go to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a presentation report by the Historical Society. Team members, please. Kayla?
Mayor Lewis and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak for a few moments and highlight the accomplishments of the Gilbert Historical Society for this past year. We've been very busy, and we're moving forward with our Communities for All Ages model. Last fall, we had a community meeting with over 75 participants ranging in age from 15 to 91. We gathered some wonderful program ideas, and we generated excitement for the future under this new model. In January, the Historical Society adopted a new vision, mission, and values that you should have in your packet. We are having a focus group this Saturday to talk about a new potential Doing Business as name for the organization. And over the next year, we will finalize a multi-year strategic plan, and we will debut new programming under this model. Another accomplishment we had was the submission of a new History of Gilbert book to Arcadia Publishing. Now, I think you've probably all seen books like this at Barnes &amp; Noble, Costco, CVS, and around other places, and we will now have one on Gilbert, so we're very excited about that. It was co-authored by Dale Halleck and myself, and Ann Norbit managed all the photographs. Now, the unique feature about this book is that it will be the first book ever published that talks about the growth of Gilbert from 1975 forward, and you know how enormous that growth has been, so we're excited to tell that story. It is due to be published in September of this year, so you can be sure that when that comes out, we will make a big splash and have several book signings, and so you'll all be invited to those. We also held our third annual A Night at the Museum Signature Fundraising Gala last month. Once again, it was a magical night in Gilbert, and I'm pleased to tell you that we raised over $34,000. Please save March 5th of 2016 for our next annual event, and yes, Brio will be back. Financially, we ended our year on March 31st with a negative $2,200, which is down just a little bit from last year. We did have some unexpected expenses with technology issues, but we were able to secure two grants to help us with some of our collection supplies and software for our artifact inventory. Of course, we did continue with all of our normal activities, such as celebrating our 10th Annual Art of Quilting Show, which is on right now until the end of May. We hosted the Fall and Spring Shows of the Gilbert Visual Art League. We had our annual Memorial Day event, and our next Memorial Day event will be on May 25th, so please put that on your calendar. And we hosted many visitors, school field trips, and scout groups, as we always do. We were also very pleased to host and tour the delegation from our sister city in La Chana, as well as Congressman Paul Gosar and his staff.
Kayla?
I just have to tell you, what you're saying is so cool. Everything is going so positively. I just am absolutely almost overwhelmed about how cool it is and how good it is. It makes me so happy, I just almost feel like I have to sing. But maybe I shouldn't sing by myself. Will anybody volunteer to help me? Albany, you could help. You're good. All right, Tabitha, let's just be happy. Could you let us take it from here?
(singing) It might seem crazy what I'm about to say. Sunshine is here, you can take a break. No cold winters, we are glad to stay. Hot air, hey, we don't care, and by the way, we live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a water tower, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you. Our museum has history and this and that. When you visit once, you'll want to come back. The farmer's market is just fine. Heritage District's a great way to spend some time. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a great council, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you. Just look around, there are sunny skies. Just look around, just barbecue, too. Just look around, still hay fields. Just look around, and cotton grows, too. Just look around, that train's coming. Just look around, another's coming soon. Just look around, swimming all year, too. Just look around. Cause we live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a water tower, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a water tower, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you. Just look around, there are sunny skies. Just look around, just barbecue, too. Just look around, still hay fields. Just look around. Cause we live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a water tower, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that the Santans have great views. We live in Gilbert. We've got great parks, great schools, and a water tower, too. We live in Gilbert. Money Magazine ranked us up at number 22. We live in Gilbert. Laugh along if you think that Gilbert is for you.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone who participated in that, and give a big round of applause to all those dancers, plus Katie Stringham, who actually wrote the lyrics and choreographed the whole thing. Now, this was our intergenerational flash mob that we first debuted at our gala last month. Tonight, we had participants from ages 15 to 75 in our dance, and this is an example of connecting the generations using history, dance, and music. We're excited about our future. We're on our way to sustainability relevancy and making a positive difference in people's lives in Gilbert by connecting the generations. So we are very grateful for your support as we continue on this journey.
Do we get to join this and try it again? Ben Cooper was right there. He wanted to go out and dance, but he wasn't sure if he could. That was fantastic, so thank you. And we've got our own happy song now.
Look at that. We're big time, 21. That moved us something.
Thank you. So, to council members, any additional comments or questions? Victor, to Councilmember Victor Peterson, I don't know how to describe what just took place. I don't know if you're able to see it, but...
Mayor, I did see it.
Excellent.
I saw it, and I'm so sad I missed it. I wasn't there, but I saw it on the screen, and that was a wonderful song and dance. Thank you all.
That's going to make Victor feel better, so thank you. All right, so, anything else as far as the report? Councilmember Daniels?
I just want to thank the museum for continuing to be a positive force in the community. I know you guys are working hard to continue with the vision and to expand that vision, and it's noted amongst all of us in the community, so thank you for all of your efforts.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson? Bridget Peterson?
To the museum, thank you for letting me check something off my bucket list of being part of a flash mob, not only in front of 300 people at the gala, but here in the council chambers, too, so double-check. Thank you.
Will they be performing at the leadership class of '23 graduation?
Mayor, I think the idea is that you will never know where the flash mob might show up.
Thank you. Rod, thank you, too. One more big round of applause for the Gilbert Happy Song. Agenda Item Number Three, update on the fiscal 2016 budget process. Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Dawn Marie Buckland with the Office of Management Budget. I don't know about you, I cannot imagine a better way to kick off the budget than with a flash mob, right? And of all the AAA-rated communities in the country, I think we are officially the first AAA-rated community, so that makes us AAA+. I, however, will not be singing the budget presentation. So we do want to take a few minutes of your time to go through an overview of where we're at in the budget process so far. As you know, this is a year-long process with a lot of moving and complex components to it. We've sent out some information here recently that we'll cover on the slides as well related to some of the requested positions for the next fiscal year, as well as some of the other focus areas that we're looking to address through next year's budget. But we wanted to start off with an overview of Gilbert, because this is, in fact, why we budget the way we do. Gilbert, as you know, we've got our tagline of "This is Gilbert." And one thing I absolutely love going through this whole rating process here recently, Jim Strickland, our financial advisor, I heard him say to one of the rating agencies, "Gilbert says, 'This is Gilbert.'" They need to put an exclamation point behind it, because "This is Gilbert." And we have so much to be proud of here in this community, as represented by the AAA. Gilbert is about growth and development, premier education, it's community-focused, a playful community, committed to safety, and innovative, and open for business. This is Gilbert. A couple of highlights of where we're seeing here related to our levels of service, when we, the budget itself is geared towards making sure that we deliver the best possible service at the lowest possible cost, as you heard from Councilmember Peterson here earlier this afternoon. And we continue to do that with flying colors. As you see from the slide up here, we've experienced a great deal of growth over the last few years. The Census Bureau shows us as the 12th fastest-growing community in the United States, and with that comes the additional fire stations, the additional lane miles, the additional infrastructure that we need to be able to provide service to that new population as well. We do so while we look at total housing units increasing from 57,900 in 2005 to 78,800 in 2012. And yet, we've managed to do that, actually reducing the number of FTE per thousand residents here in the community, all the while not even reflecting the increase on the commercial side. While we are doing that, we're still getting exceptional scores on our National Citizens Survey results. Our police protection, if you look at the statistic at the bottom of the slide there, we've gone from 27.4 crimes per thousand residents, which you'll see here shortly is actually even low statistically speaking in other communities, all the way down to 16.5. Again, a reflection of the exceptional levels of service that, through your leadership and through the implementation of staff throughout the town, we're able to continue to provide for our community. As we mentioned, Gilbert's committed to safety, and a couple of key highlights here that we are very, very proud of here in the town of Gilbert related to that, our Fire Department ISO rating upgraded from a four to a two. This is a tremendous, tremendous reflection of the safety here in the community, not only related to our responses from our public safety officials, but also related to the community as a whole. We're shown in Law Street Media as the second safest city, but that's also based on FBI statistics. So this is not simply an article that was published, but it's based on FBI statistics showing that Gilbert, Arizona is the second safest city in the United States. And then again, when you look at those Part 1 crimes per thousands, as we mentioned on the last slide, and you look at Gilbert, Arizona compared to other cities across the nation, you can see how exceptionally safe this community is. We're very focused on education here as well, and we have exceptional school districts here, as well as our St. Xavier University, the bonds that we sold today, which will be opening up here this August for fall enrollment. Community-focused, this is a rather broad encompassing category here where we look at a lot of different aspects, but Gilbert Feeding Families, Mayor, your participation this morning, a great indication of what we are here as a community. While it had showed us as the number-one city for working parents, Money Magazine shows us as the 22nd-best place to live in the United States. And then when you look at our cost of service, to have that exceptional quality of life here in Gilbert and have it at the lowest possible cost, you can see that with the $1,383 per year per household. One thing I'm very proud of as a veteran as well is the fact that we are the second-best city in the United States for veterans, and I think that's really a testament to your leadership and to what you've put together here for the community. Operation Welcome Home, a great testament to that as well. Gilbert, as you know, stands apart in our socioeconomic data as well. One of the things that the rating agencies looked at was not just how well we manage our finances here and what strong management characteristics we possess in terms of a government, but what our community brings to the table. And with our income per capita, our household income, our median home prices, all of the statistics factor into that. But that's really a reflection of the community and those that live here, the high levels of education, the concentration of PhDs that we have right here in this community, and then the depth of industry that we have, from biomedical to satellite industries and everything in between. All of the while, you can see even just through 2010, going from 1,971 residents in 1970 to the 208,000 as of the last census. Gilbert has experienced tremendous growth, and the leadership of the council and the management here of the town have been able to continue to provide exceptional levels of service throughout that growth. Playful community, one of the emphasis that we've had over the last couple of years looking at parks, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, you'll see in the proposed capital improvement program, the 10-year plan, some additional park amenities as well, and the council's really focused on making sure that we maintain and take care of the assets that we do have in that community, another tremendous asset that we have here. That puts us as the eighth-most playful city USA and the fifth-best food neighborhood in metropolitan Phoenix, especially as we look at the Heritage District and all of the restaurant offerings that we have in the downtown area. Gilbert has 23 developed parks right now and 605 acres of public parks, according to the Parks Master Plan, and again, that's a focus area for us in the upcoming 10 years. Gilbert is innovative. This is a very, very important element of the budget that you'll be reviewing over the next few weeks, because staff throughout heard the message from the council from early on, and has looked at all possible ways of delivering service in the most efficient and effective manner possible. That comes through innovation. That comes through thinking differently. Councilmember Taylor and others have really led the charge in lean Six Sigma efforts and some of the things that we can incorporate to help develop those best-in-class processes for us to use in the way that we deliver services. Our Spark App League, huge success here in terms of the students that were able to participate in that, providing them not only an opportunity to work with that type of technology and get that type of collaborative experience in building those applications, but we get the advantage then of being able to actually utilize those applications and deliver those services to our customers as a result of that. Because of that innovation, we were able to save over $26 million in interest by refinancing debt, and another $6.7 million throughout the organization by implementing some of those innovations that came about. And Gilbert is open for business.
Dawn?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Taylor requests the happy song again on that last slide.
Can we call them back in, sir? I'm not sure that I've warmed up enough to sing.
Okay, continue.
So, as we are open for business, this is, again, a continuing theme, and as we look at different things on the agenda today as well, a consistent reminder from the council is that everything that we do is for our residents and for our businesses. We want to make sure that we are setting our residents and businesses up for success here, and you see that when they open for business. This is the third-best city to find a job in the United States. That's amazing. It's the fourth-best community for Hispanic entrepreneurs. We have 1,500, over 1,500 job announcements here recently. And then as much as we look at the vibrancy of the downtown area and of the Heritage District, you can see the list here of those that are, we have Lola's Chicken Waffles that just opened up, and several more that are about to open within the next few months. So all of that really was the starting point for the budget development for the next fiscal year, and it all comes down to Gilbert's philosophy, to be best-in-class in all lines of service, but overlaying that with the idea that we want to be lean and efficient, and we want to be able to provide that at the lowest possible cost. So we've utilized three main tools in developing those best-in-class all-lines-of-service. We look at internally, measuring that, looking at metrics on how we're doing business. We look across the organization, and then we're also benchmarking externally. So we have been comparing ourselves to what we consider best-in-class organizations, so it's not just simply a tagline. For every level of service that we have in the organization, we've identified those that we see as best-in-class, both in Arizona and across the United States, and we're benchmarking against those best-in-class organizations to help us achieve that best-in-class, so that we can look at what is it that they are doing to achieve what we consider best-in-class, and what are the things that we can implement to make sure that we are as well. All of that is couched in our strategic initiatives, and you'll see as we move through the budget over the course of the next few weeks, that everything before you is a result of our mission, vision, our values, and those strategic initiatives. That's still a very broad layer, so as you know, we spoke with the council last August to get a more focused approach on what we're going to do over the course of the next year. Again, going back to the philosophy of staying lean and then maintaining that holistic approach, where we're partnering with entities throughout the community, whether it's business partnerships or with school districts or with Gilbert leadership, there are so many different facets that our rating agencies even identified and highlighted in terms of what it means to be Gilbert. The chart there on the right-hand side, I think, is very indicative of the approach that Gilbert has taken to addressing growth in a very positive and responsible manner, because as you see, our population has increased from 2007 through 2014, our population increased by almost 27%. Our commercial square foot increased by almost 25%. Our single-family housing increased by almost 22%. And yet, we were able to maintain exceptional levels of service, increasing our FTE by only 8.5%. A quick highlight here, again, of that proactive approach. We look not just at tools, we want to make sure that these aren't initiatives, just things that we're doing in the organization for doing them. These are tools that we can employ throughout the organization to achieve what we consider operational excellence. There are many different ways, and each and every time an employee identifies an area of work where we could actually recognize some improvements, recognize some efficiencies, they have a variety of tools at their disposal to actually make those positive changes within our workplace so that we can do work better and more efficiently. Because of that, we were able to accomplish goals, a significant number of goals over the last couple of years and going into the next year. As you see here on the slide, in each of our areas of strategic initiatives, we've had some exceptional... had some exceptional goals that we've been able to accomplish. You'll see one highlighted in yellow there, that's a multi-year goal there for fire accreditation that was initiated in FY14 and is ongoing today. Continuing on our current fiscal year, we have several items there again throughout the strategic initiatives. We could really make a presentation quite long by going through each and every one of these because they're really tremendous goals. They're very complex goals, they're very time-oriented goals, and I commend the staff throughout the organization for their efforts to accomplish these things. It's been exciting to see what we've been able to do here over the course of the last couple of years. But moving into FY16, this is a draft of the goals, they are still being refined. We're looking at, but this was the basis for the budget that's put before you. These are the goals and what we need to accomplish over the course of the next fiscal year. We understand, however, that we can't do everything and there's going to be limits to capacity, so we're still looking to fine-tune those based on the recommended budget and what comes from council, what we want to make sure that we set those expectations for the next fiscal year. But a lot of the items on here are very important and very exciting, all of the items on here are very important and very exciting, as you can see. And some of them are very specific in nature, such as the timing of the special census. And others are, as you look at, for example, the Long Range Infrastructure Plan, that's more of a reflection of where Gilbert is today in its growth period. As you know, we have a lot of infrastructure that was brand-new, is just beginning to age, and we want to make sure we put into place the maintenance programs today that are going to allow us to continue to have excellent infrastructure moving forward. So with that, I wanted to go really quickly, cover some of the general fund requested positions. I say really quickly, we can certainly have as much discussion as council would like, but this is not the last time that you're going to see this. This is the first introduction to the requested positions. Staff is continuing to evaluate these positions. We've had several discussions about these already so far, and there are some changes already that we'll be bringing to council over the course of the next couple of weeks. You'll see here, there are a couple of themes in particular we want to draw your attention to. When we mentioned the infrastructure, the town's infrastructure, both in terms of buildings and facilities, but in terms of our streets, our parks, and other infrastructure as well, there is an emphasis here on being able to maintain those parks and facilities. You'll also see an emphasis on public safety and some of the attributes we're trying to maintain there. Each of these positions, our department directors are prepared to answer questions that you might have, they have metrics to support the needs for them. And I'll tell you, there was a very exhaustive process to go through and vet these positions and make sure that we only brought forward those that were absolutely necessary. As we continue that again over the course of the next couple of weeks, council will be getting that refined list. These are those for the water fund. And then for the rest of the funds. So the current request is 34.45 FTE. Again, we expect that to be reduced here over the course of the next couple of weeks as we finalize those discussions and incorporate any feedback that you have on these as well. The total across all funds on an ongoing basis would be about $2.5 million. As you look at this information, please keep in mind the one-time versus the ongoing. One-time is going to be anything that we need to get those positions set up. So if it's a first time that we've had this position, they'll need a chair and a computer and a number of things just to get them set up. The larger dollar amounts are going to represent those that require a vehicle to be able to get up and running and functioning. The ongoing costs are the fully funded, fully loaded ongoing costs, it's going to be salaries and benefits. That's also going to include any type of certifications or training or any ongoing expenses associated with that position. We want to make sure we've captured every cost that would be associated with those position requests. Any questions about how we've established that? So a quick recap then of some notable highlights, notable changes from the FY15, our current fiscal year, to the FY16 budget. We have, over the course of the last few years, had our riparian preserve housed in wastewater. That is, there are very specific elements related to recharge and such, so there is definitely a nexus to that. As we were reviewing that though, that has evolved, and we have a lot of park programming and such going on there, we wanted to differentiate between that. So one change you'll see is that the park-related requests for the riparian are going to be housed in the general fund versus the wastewater fund. Insert long dramatic pause, excuse me. Environmental services, this is an umbrella that was established a couple of years ago. We used to have very separate and distinct functions for solid waste pickup and recycling, our household hazardous waste, our stormwater, and our street sweeping. What we're recommending is an overall umbrella of environmental services that could house all of those and create more of a holistic approach and hopefully recognize some economies of scale there as well. You'll see, as you look at the listing, you'll see legal, which has been housed under the management policy area. In the past, we had prosecutor in a separate category down near the courts. Those are now together, so you'll see legal and prosecutor together up under management and policy. And then you'll see as well the one-time funding for census up in management and policy. So those are the two significant changes that you'll see when you're just looking at the overall data. We have a lot of detail that we can help to support that. Very notably, we're looking at no rate increases in the enterprise funds for this fiscal year, but we wanted to continue to develop an awareness about the upcoming plant expansions here over the next few years that would require a rate increase according to our rate models, and we'll be discussing that more here shortly as well. And then you see there in the very center section, some of the areas of emphasis. I mentioned earlier, maintenance and infrastructure and ensuring that we're taking care of what we have here. We're also continuing to emphasize innovations and efficiencies, how can we do business better in every aspect of what we do, as well as looking at maintaining our service levels. I think that was first and foremost. What are our service levels? I think there's always a conversation at the staff level, are there things that we shouldn't be doing because we don't want to continue doing them just because we always have? But once we've established what our core service levels were, keep in mind, this was a zero-based budget year. So we established those core service levels, and we really look at what will it take us to maintain those service levels next fiscal year? So the costs that you see in the budget on the zero-based budget side of that really reflect what it's going to cost us to continue to provide those levels of service in the next fiscal year. Compensation is consistent with the cost and comp philosophy that the council adopted. And then the other area of emphasis here was in our replacement funds. As we continue to work through our long-range infrastructure program, we'll continue to look at what those levels of repair and replacement need to be to ensure that we're able to meet those maintenance needs.
Don, back to the second and last board on compensation to the right, PS/PRS changes. I have had, because there have been newspaper articles on that subject, a few emails that I've tried to respond to. Can you describe what that is again and what our plan is for next year's budget?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. So there, over the course of the last few years and during the recession, there were some changes that were made to our public safety personnel retirement system. There were some challenges to that on the legal side that Mike Campbell may be able to clarify if I misspeak on this. But as a result of those challenges, the findings were that in some cases, we needed to make whole for decisions that were made in the past. What that does is that increases our rate overall from an 18% contribution rate to a 22% contribution rate. The budget that you see before you incorporates that entire change rather than taking a tiered approach over the course of a few years. So we're able to own immediately what those changes are and be made whole.
And in the budget, is it 1.1 million? I might be off on that, but what is being added to next year's budget to adjust for that?
Mayor, they're going to look that up, and we'll have an answer for you here very quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions at this point? Okay, continue.
So with that, just a reminder that Gilbert is open for business, innovative, playful community, community-focused, premier education, committed to safety, growth and development. This is Gilbert.
Thank you. So June 4th, is that when we'll, or May 14th, will there be some more information related to the budget, or is it more June 4th?
Actually, Mayor, we'll be bringing back the budget both May 14th and June 4th. On May 14th, that will be the preliminary budget adoption for council. That is actually considered the most significant event of the year because it sets the maximum level of spending for the next fiscal year regardless of sources that are available to the council. After May 14th, the council is able to reduce the budget but not increase the budget. So May 14th is a very important date here for establishing that maximum level for the next year. From May 14th to June 4th, we'll be bringing back on June 4th the final budget adoption and final capital improvement program. And those will set the, more of a level of detail, I think, for Mayor and council for the next year's budget. We'll be bringing forth property tax as well. Last year, if you recall, we had, so two years ago, we had consistently maintained a property tax rate of $1.15. With the legislation last year, we had to collect exactly the amount of our debt service on the following year, and we had had a dip just the way that debt service was structured. So we reduced our property tax rate to 1.0659 to meet that specific requirement. The property tax rate is restored to 1.15 for next year, and we're able to, even with that spike back up in our debt service, according to the debt service structure, we're able to meet that at that $1.15.
Thank you. To council members hearing those two key dates coming up, do we have any questions, comments related to the budget at this study session? Councilmember Daniels?
I'm sorry.
Well, one of the things that I think was impactful in your presentation, Dawn, was the little graph that showed the percentage of the population increase, the commercial square footage. And it's denoted 2007 to 2014. I was wondering if for comparison purposes, you can show us maybe in the next presentation or via email what those numbers look like from, say, 1999 to 2006? Something that would give us some sort of comparable for us to look and to see. That was another period of high growth in Gilbert, and so that might be another opportunity for us to just benchmark those numbers.
And Councilmember Daniels, I will work with our Development Services staff to see if that information is available because I agree that would be a great depiction.
Thank you. Councilmember Victor Peterson, any comments on the budget?
Mayor, I didn't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Don, let's continue on in the study session. Agenda item number four is discussion and direction on the total amount of general funds to be available for the fiscal 2016 year for nonprofit support. So this is still budget, and now it's getting into a subcategory of the budget and some specific questions.
It is, Mayor, but I would like to go ahead and introduce to you Jessica Callahan will be taking you through that discussion. And Andy, as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jessica Carnehan, Neighborhood and Outreach Services Supervisor. This afternoon, we would like to have a discussion and ask council to provide direction on fiscal year 16 nonprofit support. So as council recalls, in 2014, the town commissioned the Williams Institute, a consultant, to complete Gilbert's first community needs assessment. Part of their scope was to look at what was currently available in the community regarding social and human services, what were the greatest needs and gaps felt by residents, and what were some recommendations and best practices to move forward in addressing some of those needs and gaps. The report came back with many recommendations, but one of the important items was that they ranked population categories by need. And so just to refresh your memory, what you see on the slide is the top nine populations ranked by priority need as needing additional services or having gaps in services to meet their needs. Some of the common identified gaps were just access to resources and referrals, safe and affordable housing, transportation, access to basic necessities, and healthcare needs. Some of these identified gaps, we took into consideration when we went out for our annual request for proposals and searching for organizations that provide these types of services to Gilbert residents. So we took a lot of those recommendations from the needs assessment and incorporated them into our funding process, asking organizations to directly submit how they would meet some of those needs and gaps. What we got back was 22 applications for 22 different programs from 18 organizations. 12 of those were funded last fiscal year, and what we found interesting was that there was 10 new programs submitted, which we feel is directly correlated to some of those needs and gaps identified in the needs assessment. The total amounts requested from those organizations was a little over $530,000. What you can see is we took the different applications and divided them among the priority populations as they were ranked in the needs assessment. And you can see how that breaks out. Unfortunately, we did not receive any funding applications for the mental health and substance abuse group, even though they were the second-highest priority population needing additional services. Staff will continue to work on that recommendation so we can meet some of those needs. But as it breaks down, again, some of those were organizations that we supported last year, but many of them were new. We had two new applications in families in crisis, two in elderly and seniors, one in homeless, one in special needs, and three in youth. So we'd like council to consider four different funding support options for nonprofits as we move forward. The options are displayed above, and we wanted to incorporate the $50,000 in anticipated neighbor-to-neighbor contributions as part of your consideration, along with, separated out from the general fund contribution. And so I'll be going into each one of these a little more specifically. So option one is to continue with the town funding reduction policy that was adopted in fiscal year 13, with the intent to replace general fund contribution with support to nonprofits in other ways, whether that be volunteerism or private donations. As you can see, in the neighbor-to-neighbor funds between fiscal year 14 and 15, council had adopted the Share My Stamp program, which was an additional revenue source that went into the neighbor-to-neighbor program that increased the funds to support nonprofit services. Oops, sorry about that. So option one would address potentially two of the seven priority populations as identified in the needs assessment. Option two would be maintain the same level of funding as we did in fiscal year 15. This would address five of the seven priority populations at some level, not at full requested amounts per the organizations. But we would use the community needs assessment to prioritize which services and how much to fund based on the recommendations. But please do note that this level of funding would not cover any additional needs or gaps in services as recommended per the needs assessment. Option three would be to consider meeting some of those additional needs and gaps. This would address six of the seven priority populations, the seventh being that mental health substance abuse group that we didn't receive any applications for. So it would meet many of the community needs that were identified and address some additional gaps in services. We would use the funds in the most efficient manner in looking at the services that those organizations are proposing and matching them to the most common themes identified in the needs assessment. This option also most closely aligns with the ranking prioritization exercise that the Human Relations Commission the Human Relations Commission completed last month. And then, option four would be to fully fund all requests received. Again, this addresses six of the seven priority populations, but at a much larger scale than the previous option. We would more fully fund some of the organizations. And obviously, this is the largest general fund contribution out of the four options, and it is equal to about a 2007 level of general fund support. One of the items to note is that it may possibly set false expectations for the future. We would have to let our applicants know that, you know, every year is contingent on our budget and our funding and based on any trends in needs or gaps in services moving forward. So, again, here's a capture of the four options that staff is requesting direction on moving forward from council for fiscal year 16 nonprofit support.
Thank you, Jessica. I know two of our council members were not part of some of the discussions three years ago, and that would really be tied to option one. And I also know three years ago, in reducing the general fund amount that was desired, and we did try some options of looking at ways to replenish those funds without using town funds. And we also have had some great volunteers. Forest City, as an example, has provided, and then faith groups and other organizations that are helping the nonprofits have done a lot of volunteer work that's also helped. So, I believe for the council, we were not sure. We had some discussions over the last two or three years that the needs assessment, we felt, would give us additional help and guidance. And it did. It gave us some priorities. The exact amount that needs to be funded is still up for discussion. And so, I will just turn to council members. As you look at these four options where our team is looking for direction for preparing the budget, what comments do you have? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, maybe before I get into some of the options, ask maybe just a couple of questions here on that. Jessica, on one of the prior slides, there was a number from last year on neighbor-to-neighbor at 54,000, and this year it's 50. I know we're only talking 4,000, but it's going down. I would hope that that would be going up as it becomes, you know, more well-known in the community. Is there something that we're learning here from neighbor-to-neighbor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Taylor, neighbor-to-neighbor funds are actually going up. In fiscal year 15, we had retained almost a year and a half of neighbor-to-neighbor funds, and so, we actually had a little more funds available during that year and used 54,000 of it. That was two years' worth of collections because we had just started the Share My Stamp as an additional revenue source to neighbor-to-neighbor. So, for fiscal year 16, the $50,000 reflects one year of donations and revenue source. So, it is actually increasing.
Okay, that helps. One other thing, just to help me learn a little bit more about these groups, is I would like to get whatever their most recent annual report is. Most of these groups have a community report of how they spent their money and what they used it for. I'd love to get some of that research as well in making it. And then, Mayor, just, I guess, two other comments quick. I know we've had a few discussions about helping the community know a little bit more about neighbor-to-neighbor, and I'd certainly continue to support whatever we can do to, you know, whether it's more utility bill space, if there's some opportunities there, or if there's some Channel 11 exposure, or I'm not looking to create any new marketing plan, but just use some of the existing communication channels that we have to kind of share what this wonderful program does. And then, just to finalize my thought here, I'm still supportive of and would vote for option one. The others, I would need to think a little bit more about, get more information. Would love to see, you know, more exposure and, you know, community awareness on neighbor-to-neighbor because I think that has a lot of runway to take the edge off the original plan. So, that's my thoughts at this point, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Cook?
Jessica, could you go back to the slide of the current applicants for this year? Is there a breakdown of all the organizations in each of the categories? I think I saw a sheet.
On the handout?
On your handout.
Go on to.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Cook, there was a handout emailed, but I will also distribute an updated one that has all of the organizations broken out. Do you want that up on the slide, Councilmember Cook?
That'd be great.
Okay.
I think you'll see in the handout, there's the dollar request that each of the agency is asked for in their applications. So, Jessica, I know that for option one, you highlighted the Chandler Christian Community Center in yellow and the Boys and Girls Club in yellow. Could you explain why those two, again?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, these would be preliminary organizations that we're looking at, depending on which option council should provide direction on. The two in yellow, Chandler Christian Community Center operates the Gilbert CAP office, which provides emergency financial assistance to individuals and families in crisis. They do serve approximately $1,500 residents per year. And the other one is the Gilbert Boys and Girls Club located in Heritage District, which provides low or no cost after-school and intermittent break services for youth. And the reason staff would recommend funding for these two should option one be chosen is because they're both physically located in Gilbert, but those two also provide the most assistance to the most Gilbert residents, whereas many of the other organizations are physically located outside and serve a much smaller number of residents in proportion.
And then, Jessica, when we have priority one, priority two, priority three, and so forth through seven, in selecting, you know, those two for yellow, you have any feedback as to, you know, why priority one, priority seven? It sounds like the way it was indicated was you, it seemed like staff felt like it reached the most residents or individuals in Gilbert, even though one's priority seven versus one's priority one, correct?
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, the priorities listed in the needs assessment show the priority population needing the most additional services. And so, when we look at these funding levels, these organizations have historically been funded at these levels in the past. Should we reduce them or eliminate a significant portion of their funding? If we went back out and did another needs assessment, suddenly, youth would be a higher priority because we weren't supporting an organization that provides a large impact already for that group.
And let me, just another quick question. Even though organizations like the Catholic Charities Community Services asked for $10,000, the Child Crisis Center asked for $10,000, and the Clothes Cabinet only asked for five, do we have the ability to give them more even though they only asked for a certain amount? Is there any reason why we couldn't, like, give them 5x the amount of money because they would meet, you know, our number-one priority that's in the needs assessment?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, there's no restriction or policy in providing additional funds more than what an organization requested. What staff would do would go back to the organization and see if by giving them more funds, is that serving additional Gilbert residents that they didn't ask for or more fully funding residents? We wouldn't want to provide more funding than they would need to fully support Gilbert resident services.
So, Mayor and council, I would lean toward option one. And the reason why is because of the needs assessment and our priorities one through seven. And I feel like, you know, when I look at the 80/20 rule, I tend to want to put, you know, 80% of those funds toward our highest priority. And if something were to change where we could provide additional funding, you know, that met priority one, then move down to priority two, you know, I may entertain moving to a different option, but, you know, as it stands right now for me, I would tend to lean toward option one unless we can make some more focus on priority one type of efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. There's actually a couple of things that I see different about our funding this year. The first one is that we've done a needs assessment, and so, we know now as a council what the true needs are in the community. The second is that we now know who is operating within the town of Gilbert, which I think previously, we may not have known or understood all of the different organizations and nonprofits that were operating within the town. Now, previously, we had a conversation that families in crisis are our first priority. That's been clearly our number-one priority. When I look at the stars on this sheet that Jessica handed out, and those are organizations that support victims and families that have had domestic violence occur within their, to me, that's considered a family in crisis. So, while they might be under different priorities, to me, those are still families in crisis. And so, how do we look for opportunities to be able to meet and assist in meeting those needs while also recognizing that we have a budget and budget constraints and things like that? So, maybe as we move forward, we can look at some of those agencies that are providing assistance to domestic violence, families who are affected by domestic violence, and those may need to be recategorized according to our chart. And so, if someone's a victim of domestic violence and PD gets involved, we would provide them, those families, counseling services through our police department. But the police department also needs to be able to refer them to other sources and resources that can provide assistance to help them either get out of those situations or heal from those situations. And so, I sort of see these in partnership with our police department. So, that's where my head is going when it looks at this list. And I think you've done a tremendous job, Jessica. No criticism whatsoever, but we may need to look at some of these starred ones and maybe shift some of the.
And Councilmember Daniels, I fully agree with you because when I chatted with Jessica and staff, and she did put these stars, it was unbelievable to me how nice that was. And I was kind of like trying to pull, well, can we encourage them to request, you know, dollars in those areas that meets our needs assessment when there are regional partners that can provide those assistance? So, I'm very much in agreement with you. If, again, back to the encouragement of them, you know, taking maybe funds that we have and reallocated toward that, again, I'm open to having a further discussion, even though they only asked for certain funds in certain areas, maybe we could add more funds to those needs because they provide those services.
Do you have one more question, Mayor?
Please.
That's actually directed toward Jessica. Are there any duplicative services, if you will? I saw a couple of these. It says, "Providing help with adoption and foster care families." I wasn't sure if there was overlap in what the service was or if it was, you know, they're catching some but not catching up. I'd hate for us to be spending money to duplicate services in a way that doesn't get the most for the individual dollar.
Mayor, Councilmember Daniels, there are some that provide similar services. So, we would certainly take a look at that when we develop contracts for service. Some of the proposals are pretty broad in what they're requesting to provide. So, depending on the option moving forward, we might only fund a certain portion of service that they're providing that we see as a gap as opposed to fully funding them for what they specifically requested. So, we would reduce their scope of service to make sure that it's actually meeting what we need them to meet in the community. So, the short answer is yes, there are some small duplicates here.
Councilmember, either Bridget Peterson or Councilmember Victor Peterson?
Mayor?
Please.
My position on this hasn't really changed a lot. I do appreciate everyone's work. I think we have learned a lot about this topic in the last few years, and I think we're all better off for it. You know, my position about what we should be funding and things really hasn't changed. So, I'm in favor of option one still. Anyway, that's, really don't have any more to explain there. I'm sure everyone already knows my position pretty well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is a question for Jessica or the council. Which option would best address the gaps identified in the needs assessment?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, option three would best meet gaps. Option two would meet some specific needs identified in the needs assessment. Option three goes a little bit above and addresses some gaps.
This is my first time discussing the priorities and the needs and the nonprofits, obviously. I did attend your study session in August, and trying to wrap my head around all of the different organizations and what they do and how much they affect Gilbert. When we went and toured yesterday, we did a great tour of a new leaf and saw the great services that Gilbert residents were being provided with there in Mesa, and that we would never be able to meet those here in Gilbert, especially in domestic violence situations where a domestic violence situation is most likely going to move the person from Gilbert to another location. They wouldn't be treated or helped here in Gilbert. They'd be treated outside of Gilbert to get the support that they need. I'm a little concerned. I would not be comfortable with option one. I think that we've tried to meet the needs over the past few years with that option, and seeing the results of the needs assessment, we've seen that we are not meeting the needs of the residents. And even the neighbor-to-neighbor program isn't necessarily increasing at the rate that I think that we all hoped that it would increase, especially as the town grows and we have more households and hoping that people would be involved. And I do see the advertising that our group is doing. Gilbert Digital runs the advertisement for that quite often, and we talked about it at Community Culture Day for Gilbert Leadership a couple of weeks ago. I would be more apt to look at probably options two and options three because I would want to try to fill the gaps that we're seeing in that needs assessment that we ran for the community. I'm disappointed that we didn't see mental health issues addressed, but I also think that that's more of a private sector that will come in to try and address those, and I know that we're working hard in the community to see those, but we can't help something that isn't coming to us looking for the help. I'm also not sure about increasing to organizations that ask for a certain amount. I think if they've asked for a certain amount from the community, that they're asking for that amount from Gilbert because of a certain reason, and maybe they have other ways of drawing funds that would affect them from us giving them more because I don't know how their processes work. And it's interesting that Councilmember Taylor asked for the write-ups of the companies or the nonprofits so that we could see those. That would probably be very beneficial to see what they do and how they do it and how many people in Gilbert that they're serving before I could make a definite decision.
Jessica, back to the PowerPoint slide. I might have you go to the one that has the four options. And Councilmember Daniels? And Councilmember Daniels, I may need to come back to you and get a little more specific, but I'll share a couple of my thoughts. And I don't know if we're, when we get into the details as a council, it's hard. We're trying to stay at the policy level. This is a great approach to detailed information that's very helpful for the council. And what, I guess I'll make the comment, when in 2013, we were on the path of option one, I gave total support to that, and there are some states in the United States that don't have any general funds used to support the nonprofits. Arizona is different, though, and several states do. Gilbert, when we've compared Gilbert to other communities, we're one of the lowest, and a lot of that has to do with we're a new community that grew very quickly, and needs assessment did give a lot of good information. So I have, I would really like to have an approach where we wouldn't use general funds. And one of the approaches we took was to do our own Gilbert group that would support nonprofits. And part of, not only did we struggle with that, but I realized that particular organization would be gathering funds that would take away from the nonprofit fundraising, and then it would just be, the government was doing the fundraising as opposed to nonprofits. And so that one, I've, I've kind of backed off on. I think the neighbor-to-neighbor, I wish, as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, that we had a way to make it easier because most residents I talked to would be in full support. And, and yet, there's a couple of steps to go out and to set it up that takes a little bit of work, and sometimes it's not as easy to do, and, and they need some handholding. So I think we could have ways where the community would give full support. And part of where I'm going to summarize my feelings on this is that because I've had so many residents give their verbal support to helping nonprofits, that I'm, I'm probably option three. And, and yet, if we had a way to increase the neighbor-to-neighbor, if we had a way to not use general funds, I'm still totally supportive of that. Part of what causes my option three is the needs assessment, and that even from 2013, there's been additional changes in Gilbert that have caused me to feel that way. Your comment about the Boys and Girls Club, and also our first one, the Chandler Christian Community Center, they do, and, and I agree, and we had this discussion, they do give support to the most Gilbert residents. And the Boys and Girls Club also comes back to, we, Gilbert, and the police department had a lot to do this, we were the ones that asked the Boys and Girls Club to come here because of some of the struggles we were having. A reason for talking about option three is all that Dawn shared as far as our community and accolades have a lot to do with a safe community, and as Councilmember Daniels pointed out, there are some asterisks here that do talk about supporting the families. And so I think the needs assessment was a driver for me to say, that's the closest, I think, that I would feel. We don't have an exact amount as to what the dollar amount is for needs, but as I put it to these seven priorities, I know Councilmember Cook has done a great job of talking about the domestic violence. A lot of the other groups and the different priorities that may not be listed in priority one still have a lot to do, in my opinion, to strengthening families, to minimize what we would hope would never happen of, of violence in a, in a, in a family setting, but I think they help. And so I, that's, that would be my current feeling in giving direction on the budget. And Councilmember Bridget Peterson, I don't know if you're exactly there, but that's kind of what I heard. So back to Councilmember Daniels, if you put into the options, or you may have a different way to phrase it, too, but as far as giving direction for the budget, realizing we have, not a consensus, but do you have any guidance?
I think back to 2009, when we were in the process of formulating a new budget in the town, and for at least that year and, and maybe previous years, I wasn't on the council prior to, but we allowed the funding to drive the vision and to drive the strategic choices that we were making. And, and we switched that, since we just talked about budget, I can tie this in. We shifted that thought process to allow a strategic plan and an actual vision for the community to drive the budget rather than the other way around. And I, I see this actually as very much the same way. The reason I didn't categorize it is because I don't know if, where it falls as far as dollar amount goes. I would like to see us have our vision and our strategic plan drive the funding allocation. And we're, that's what this is attempting to give us, and I think, again, Jessica, you did a fine job. What I would like to do, and I'm not that quick at math, and so maybe what we do is we look to see which of these provides the domestic violence. There's, we have a, a community emphasis on, on curbing domestic violence and assisting those families. We know that this is an issue as it relates to what our police department is involved in on a very regular basis. And so if we allow our vision of strong families and our vision of strengthening families and providing families resources to drive this, then I would, I don't know where that falls in number-wise, but I think that that's, that's the direction that I would go.
Councilmember Cook, on, one reason why, reason why I wanted to bring up that slide, you have had, you've been a great champion of the domestic violence priority, which isn't listed exactly, but priority one comes closest to that. So as you look at that, if you, as you talked about option one, and you ask back to the youth where there were a lot of funds that were going to the Boys and Girls Club, what would, what direction would you give to Jessica as far as option one and the 22 that have requested funds? How would we, what direction would we give?
And I think for me, and again, it's back to the option, which I think we, as a council, have the flexibility to either reappropriate or reallocate or increase funding, you know, to meet, you know, what I would consider our priority number one based upon the needs assessment. And, and I know that, you know, you, you and others went to the New Leaf organization, and they do have the ability to provide services for domestic violence. They did not make a request from us for those dollars, but again, if we had an idea of their gap that they might need, it'd be interesting to know what those dollars would be. And I don't have that data. So without that data, I, you know, it's hard for me to.
Right.
Make any, any type of direction other than I'd like to get more data as relates to these other agencies that can provide support for domestic violence.
And that would help. If you had to give direction tonight, though, trying to understand your other comments, would you be saying from this detailed list to fund priorities one, two, and three, which would roughly be maybe a little bit of four, too, but is that the order you would go?
Yeah, and in fact, if you were to add up, you know, priorities one, two, and three, maybe even four, you know, you're near the $230,000, you know, that has been allocated for this year.
And the others, they don't have high-dollar figures. That would mean, though, that the one that does have the high-dollar figure, the Boys and Girls Club, would not receive any funding.
And again, based upon the priorities, you know, for me, it would be, I would rather focus on the 80/20 rule, since we had the needs assessment document.
Sure.
I mean, that's what I would, would do, and then, you know, after the 80 was met, then the 20 could be allocated to, again, that's just, you know, it's just a high-level discussion. I don't know if 80/20 rule is the right rule, but that's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Victor Peterson, any feedback if, if option one were selected, how would we do that as far as the 22 groups that have responded?
I guess there's a couple of ways. One would be where you just take the top two and then allocate it proportionally, or you can take the top, you know, X amount, whatever we think is appropriate in, you know, because Human Relations Commission put some priorities in here. So you take the dollar amount, compare it to the totals requested, and then you would just proportionally, you know, level it to what's approved, whether it's option one, two, or three, you know, something like that. And I have another comment that's maybe just trying to approach the problem in a little bit different way, so I don't want to derail this conversation, but maybe I can just add that towards the end, if, just to seed some thoughts for down the road.
Councilmember Victor Peterson, anything you wanted to add to that?
Mayor, I'm, I'm supportive of Eddie's idea in, in taking the top few priorities and using the 230 or so thousand towards that. There are other approaches that are fine, too. I didn't quite follow what Jared said. It's kind of hard to hear, hear over the phone, but I think there are a number of ways we could approach it. But again, option one, I think, is, is the most appropriate in, from my viewpoint.
Sure. And let me just ask one more question to the three of you. If we were using no general funds, and let's say for some reason the council was in charge of $400,000 that someone had given to us, and they said the council is in charge of that, would you have a problem in funding option three? So is it, and the reason why, and Victor, Eddie and Jared were nodding.
Federal government.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it wasn't federal government either, were nodding no. So I, I do understand that, that from a taxpayer perspective, you'd really appreciate getting out of the funding of nonprofits. And, and I understand that, I appreciate it. That's a tough one, though. And I, I go back to, not trying to lobby to the three of you, but investing in the community is, is what that chart shows me. And so I worry about the repercussion, the impacts of some of these groups that do provide a lot of great services to us, what that would mean. And so back to Councilmember Daniels, I just, if you've got any direction, because I'm not, if I'm, if we're about to end, so we can move on to another topic, we haven't really come to.
No.
A council consensus to give direction to staff.
So maybe I could phrase this question directly to you, Eddie, then. Are you in favor of any other amounts over option one?
Yes, as I said before.
Oh, okay.
If, if the funding, and again, that's where the data is needed.
Right.
If we're able to identify the funds of the agencies, as you identify as stars, which I've, I really appreciated that Jessica mentioned or highlighted, if they were going to meet our priority number one, which, again, domestic violence to me, I would be open to having further discussions of adding dollars to those agencies that were to provide for domestic violence, because that is, right now, the number one need in our community. I, it's hard to refuse, I don't see how anyone can refuse, helping the, really, the, you know, the folks that are the most innocent in our community. So again, without the additional data, I can't say additional $50,000 or additional million will help. I don't know.
So you and I are both basically at the same.
Exactly, exactly.
So what I'm hearing, Mayor, is that we want to move forward with priority one, families in crisis, including all of those that are starred and identified as domestic violence, and that we're looking at those items that have a direct effect on the family. So while we have these priorities, these families in crisis is going to be our top priority. So we need to assemble what that total dollar amount might be, and then determine if each agency, and we'll have to do that at a future meeting with, I think, the additional information that you requested, what are they providing, how are they providing it, right? And so I think at a future meeting, Mayor, we take those that fall into that category, and we determine if we would like to fund all of those to their 100% request, or if based on the additional data, we fund them at a less, less than what they requested, or perhaps at zero, depending on if there's a duplication in services in some areas. So that's where I'm going.
Mayor, Councilmember Daniels, if I could ask for a little clarification for us, so at the next stage, we would need to bring contracts forward. So along with those contracts, you would like us to work with each one of the agencies identified that are, are dealing with families in crisis and victims of domestic violence, to understand and possibly clarify that these funds would be directly tied to those programs, even if you've requested something different. We're open to entertaining funding support as long as those dollars go directly to these targeted areas, and make sure that we have their buy-in on that before we bring something forward for consideration, as well as the potential that these amounts could be adjusted.
So it's targeted areas, including our top priority, which is families in crisis. Our priority two, the mental health and substance abuse treatment, since we didn't get anyone. And I think that we will probably reach our maximum comfort level with funding based on that information that's provided. And so yes, we will need to look, but special attention to those that maybe are duplicating services or have overlapping services, because we'll want to adjust, I think, the funding level based on that.
So, and if I can follow up on that, so for families in crisis and domestic violence, would you like us also, there's a lot of wraparound services outside of the primary core services, so what you'd like us to do is also balance to provide funding for as many of the wraparound services as possible? Okay?
I'll have to add a concern that these seven priorities do not represent, in my opinion. And so I'll insert one they were, that when they were developed, and I'll, I'll use the mayor's education roundtable, I've been part of representing Gilbert, that you see figures that if a young man, young woman does not get a high school diploma, the impact on the government for the next 70 years increases tenfold. And so I go back to, if you want to have greater needs, especially for domestic violence, and you don't take care of our youth in these younger years, then just plan on tenfold what burden you're going to put on Gilbert. And so I'll, I'll just add that to the council, ask you to think about it, because I think we would make a terrible mistake if we don't continue to say to the Boys and Girls Club that you're a key part of our community, and if we gave them zero funding, we'll, we'll see negative repercussions in future years that would come back to this council discussion, and someone would have to say, boy, I made a big mistake, and I caused some things that, that increased domestic violence. And I, and that may be a harsh way to say it, but I just, if domestic violence is such a key thing, take care of it in younger years, and don't let it become a problem for future councils.
I thought we were including them in our recommendation.
I did as well, Mayor.
Yeah.
Never mind. No, I know, I, I guess I, listening to council, though, I, I needed to emphasize that, because that's not what I'm hearing from all council members.
I agree. Mayor, that's also, I was not hearing that from all council members, too. So I wanted to reiterate what you said, is some of these issues, maybe, I hate to use the word, "lower level," but some of these issues at a lower level will affect the family so much more that we can help them so that they don't become higher-level issues for the families. And some of the children going to the Boys and Girls Club are going there every day because there are issues at home and within the family, and they need that escape. And I think that we can do so much good with the Boys and Girls Club alone, and, but I still am in favor of looking at these and the different priorities. I think, I think my head is where yours is, Mayor, and that I don't know that these would be my priorities, but I don't want to see us not fund certain organizations just, and I, not just because of domestic violence, but holding the other nonprofits hostage because of domestic violence. And we need to figure out exactly what our priorities are as a council, and maybe we won't completely agree, but maybe we can become more well-rounded and not so focused. I think that maybe there, there's too much of this, and we need to be a little more well-rounded with the groups and organizations. My opinion.
And to our town manager, Banjo, you gave a great summary. I still worry that we're not united as a council, and that's okay. That's a great blessing of a council, but I, I don't know really where we head. And, and so we, we could, for time's sake, we probably leave this agenda item, and maybe we think about it, maybe there's some more things the town leadership can give us, and I realize that it'll put Jessica in a little bit of a bind of, of the contracts you mentioned that need to be decided at some point, but I'm not sure if right now we've come to a place where we're giving you direction. And Councilmember Taylor, I know you had another comment you wanted to make, so please.
Well, Mayor, this, it, it kind of ties into the next one here. Well, Mayor, this, it kind of ties into the next one here a little bit, just a different way to think about solving the problem, because I appreciate Councilmember Daniels' focus on the family, that it solves so many problems. You know, Councilmember Cook, the other day, talked about the food tax. So just running the marble here, if we take the current plan, run the contributions to nonprofit to zero, at the same time, work on eliminating the food tax, then that is effectively putting much more than this dollar amount into our families, specifically those in need. There's families in South Gilbert that don't access a lot of these resources in North Gilbert. It's just too far to drive for the Boys and Girls Club. Now, I'm not discounting, there is great value in the organization of these resources and the expertise in here as well. But when we talk about dollar value, I would argue it would go up with the elimination of the food tax. It would impact many more people. Yeah, granted, it's not as targeted here, I see that as the downside. There's great, you know, value in these people with expertise in certain areas, focusing on, on point issues, but I see the impact across the town more evenly, specifically with our family, and the dollar value going up. Just throwing that out there as a thought, that we can pick up, you know, down the road. But I wanted to put that out, it's just a different way to solve the problem.
Thank you. So as a council, let's press pause button on Agenda Item Four.
Can I just say thank you to Jessica? Really, thank you with your staff. I know it's a lot, a lot of hard work, and we've been at it for a number of years, and again, thank you for the effort. It's, we're getting closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, we'll have your turn to this Item Number Five discussion on FY 2016 sales tax.
All right, Councilmember Daniels, just a moment ago, mentioned the idea of using vision to drive the revenue sources and not revenue sources to drive the vision. And I think you'll see that, that that's, that's a message that we took from the council, and we've continued to look at that as we work together throughout the organization, with the executive team, with Town Manager's Office, and then bringing that back to council. So we started with the vision, and basically the message that we got from council early on in the fiscal year about what you wanted your next fiscal year to look like. And we developed and prioritized those needs, found the most efficient and effective way we could provide services at the lowest possible cost, and then we overlaid what our available revenues were. And so rather than looking at what revenues were available and how should we spend them, we started with what are the essential elements and vision that the council has shared with us, and how can we best accomplish those. So tonight is no exception to that. You saw some of the budget needs earlier on, both in, both in the general overview, and then just now with the not-for-profit discussion. And with that, now we wanted to move into a discussion related to revenues. So a quick overview, we're going to look at some of the collection history, some of the ways in which our sales taxes impacted our fund balance, talk a little bit about why we've structured it in that fashion, and some of the important caveats to that. You see sales tax categories on there. We're going to talk at a high level, looking at our construction sales tax compared to our retail sales tax, and then we have several smaller sales tax categories that roll up into that. And then legislative impacts, we can, we may briefly discuss, that's something we may continue on to the next session, depending on the conversation. But then we wanted to have some policy-level conversation with the council related to the FY 16 budget, and Councilmember Cook has, has some slides at the end that he'd like to present to the council as well. So a quick overview, as you look at sales tax across the years, back from 2000 through 2015, we wanted to break out what were the primary makeup and nature of the sales tax collections were. As I mentioned, we have several smaller sales tax components that make up that overall category of other, some of which we can break down into a finer level of detail should council require that information. Some of the very, very small ones that have fewer than 10 businesses associated with them, per our agreement with the Department of Revenue, we're not allowed to disclose those, but we can look at those higher-level categories in whatever level council would like later on. However, what we really wanted to draw your attention to here, you see the light blue at the bottom, the red in the middle, and then the dark blue at the very top. That dark blue represents the construction-related sales tax for the town of Gilbert. It's very important that we continue to look at it in this fashion, because while we've had a lot of construction activity over the years, you can see, first of all, by the, by the depiction up on the slide, that it's really the first area that has volatility with the, with the cyclical structures. This particular slide was very helpful as we, as we discussed Gilbert with the rating agencies, because you can see our overall foundation of, of sales tax, which is considered normally a very volatile source of revenue, our overall foundation is very stable. Looking there, you can very easily see that dip where the, where we, where we experienced the recession over that period of years. However, if you looked at the light blue and red combined, you'll see that that actually was fairly stable during that period of time, and where Gilbert really saw a significant reduction was in construction-related activities. This is, this is, again, one of the reasons why the rating agencies saw the value in Gilbert saw us as a very, see us as a very safe investment in our community because that's stable revenue base. Now, that's also, though, why we continue to look at construction-related revenues as nonrecurring, at least at the higher levels when we get them in. We consider that a nonrecurring level of revenue for the town of Gilbert. Even though we may get it multiple years in a row, we'll see dips depending on the level of activity. Furthermore, as we approach build-out, this is going to become less and less a part of our revenue structure, and so we, we take that into account as well. The final item on this slide, you can see population, and just to give it an appropriate scale, we started population at the, at the top of the revenues in 2000, so that you can see the slope of the line as population increased across that period of time compared to the changes in revenues. So the slope has been somewhat similar, but overall, you can see the slope of, the slope, particularly of the sustainable revenue sources for Gilbert, is much, much less, the revenue is much less steep than that of the corresponding population. That's a, that's a reflection of a couple of things. One is that we, we continue to recognize economies of scale. So as we're serving more customers, we have some fixed costs, and we're able to do that more efficiently. We continue to look for ways, again, that we can provide the best possible service at the lowest possible cost. So, so just a little corresponding ratio there between those two. Any questions so far? Again, a highlight overall that we wanted to share with the, with the community, and as we did with the rating agencies, this is something that the City of Tempe puts together every year, and I think it's important to note that, that this is actually from a third-party perspective. As they look at the cost of providing services here to our residents, Gilbert, local rates here in Gilbert are lower than what you'll see across the state. We have the lowest sales tax in the state, rate in the state, we have one of the lowest property tax rates, and we have one of the lowest costs of providing our utility services. So in this example, here, you see that Gilbert's cost of providing services per residential household is about $1,383 compared to the other cities that you see up on the corresponding slide. The average in the valley is 1,662. So we want to talk a little bit about how that fund balance, how the fund balance and how the sales tax work in, in concert with our fund balance overall. One of the things that we've talked about over the last few years is that comparison between the CAFR, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that, that the Accounting Division publishes every year, and the Budget Document. The CAFR is bound by Government Accounting Standards Boards and the rules and regulations therein. There are certain items within the CAFR that we don't consider the same way in the budget, so we wanted to give you a bit of a crosswalk. This is probably one of the best overviews where you can see how that works out. In the CAFR, when you look at fund balance, you're going to see unassigned, you'll see assigned, and you'll see non-spendable. The non-spendable, the, the primary driver of non-spendable fund balance in Gilbert is our negative fund balances and the system development fees. We show negative fund balances in four of our system development fee funds, because we wanted to build the infrastructure ahead of growth coming in and actually needing to use it. So we allowed those funds to go negative and had the general fund offset that cost. The non-spendable amount for accounting purposes in the CAFR really reflects, in effect, an IOU from those system and development fees into the general fund. So from, for budgeting purposes, when we're talking to the council about fund balance, when you compare that to the CAFR and you look at that non-spendable amount, that's something that they need to record in, in that document every year. For budgeting purposes, that's not money that's actually available for appropriating in the budget for the next fiscal year. The other distinction here is that, which we show as assigned. And we assign fund balance for the general fund towards our repair and replacement funds. So for accounting purposes, that is consolidated for the reporting purposes. We actually, in the budget document, you'll be able to look and see those two set aside as separate funds. So you'll see the general fund, and then you'll see the repair and replacement fund for the general fund. Similarly, with the other operating funds as well. Does that help provide some clarification on fund balance? Are there any questions related to that?
Please.
This is a great slide. I love this slide. Don knows I love this slide a lot. And we'll talk more about it later.
So to Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Well, I mean, the, the.
Councilmember Cook has a big smile on his face, so you can see that.
How I will talk about this later with you guys, not with just Don alone.
So one other thing I would like to highlight here, when we look at the overall increase in fund balance, we had talked with council, from the budgeting perspective, of the increase in fund balance last year from 59 million to 61 million, and you see that there, the $2 million increase in that light blue on the bottom. You also see overall, if we looked at a $6 million increase to fund balance for CAFR purposes, 2 million of that $6 million increase is in that non-spendable category. So that's actually a reflection of a larger negative, if you will, in the system development fee fund. So very important to be able to distinguish. This way, you can look at the budget document, you can look at that CAFR, and you'll be able to compare the two and understand what you're reading and what the differences represent.
Mayor?
Yes, please, Victor.
I just had a question about this. First of all, thank you for the, these are some awesome charts with some awesome data. I love it. I was wondering if, for one, you could email me the PowerPoint? And I was also curious if I could get the underlying data points to the chart. I know that's kind of geeky, but I would really enjoy that.
We can certainly do so.
And then, one other question, back to the fund balance chart. I don't see there, and we talked about this on the phone, but what, what portion of that is, should be reserved based on our reserve balance policy?
Councilmember Peterson, I appreciate your question. If I may hold you just a little bit, I think we're going to address that here in just a couple of slides.
Okay, you predicted my question. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Don, continue.
Quick overview, or review, I should say, of our financial policy related to fund balance. As council knows, we adopted financial policies in 2011, I believe, and we've been reviewing those each year to make sure that they're relevant. Council has added a few additional restrictions, and the rating agencies actually applauded you for making them more restrictive versus less restrictive. They also applaud the council, and you'll see that in the report, for consistently adhering to those financial policies. So you put into place the policies behind the values here for the community, for the council, and we've consistently adhered to that, and that was something they were very happy to see. As it relates to fund balance, council adopted a very conservative fund balance policy, which really helped to relieve some of the, of the uncertainty, I think, for the rating agencies when they looked at our revenue structure and sales tax, again, normally being considered a volatile source of revenue. And the state of Arizona and some of the flux it's been over the last few years gave them a little bit of pause, is that gives them a little bit of pause as they're reviewing Arizona communities. But they commended the council for adopting a minimum fund balance policy that would allow the community to adjust should some extreme volatility occur. That minimum fund balance policy was adopted in 2011. Government Finance Officers Association recommends 60 days of operating capital, assuming that you have a balanced portfolio of revenues. We worked with them, given the Arizona environment, and council adopted a policy of 25%, or 90 days, basically, of that operating capital, plus its annual debt service payment. In addition to that, we also, in our financial policies, the council also adopted a $5 million economic development reserve to be able to, to act on any opportunities that the council believed would be in the best interest of the community that required quick ability to respond. So in terms of the debt service, you can see it's fairly consistent from year to year. This represents the general funds portion of our public facilities, municipal property corporation debt, which was used to build facilities around, around the town. That debt service is fairly consistent from year to year, particularly since 2010. So this, when you look at what proportion of that minimum fund balance is, that's highlighted on the slide as well. So a quick review, when we look at total fund balance from a CAFR perspective, we've got the total fund balance. Available fund balance, then, is less the restricted fund balance, and council hasn't restricted that fund balance, but we do have assigned fund balance of the repair and replacement funds, less the minimum required fund balance, which Councilmember Peterson had alluded to a moment ago, that we'll see here in a subsequent slide, and then minus that economic development reserve. So that gets us to basically what would be considered available fund balance for budgetary purposes. Then we look at what are our long-term plans, and this is where that overlay that we've been talking about in our, in the council retreat, and in, over the last couple of years, as it relates to the long-range infrastructure program, as it relates to the five-year plan, the opening of the fire station, staffing of certain parks projects in the future, and other plans that are on the horizon, making sure that we have the resources available. So this, back to Councilmember Peterson, if, I don't have the slide number up there, I apologize, but there is an unassigned fund balance slide that also has the minimum required there overlaid. You can see in 2011, when we adopted that policy, and you can also see where we were during the recession, where we were actually below what that minimum fund balance policy would be. Between fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2014, we really saw a lot of normalization then, as we were coming out of that recession, and then looking at what, what, where Gilbert stood on, on the heels of that recession. So the next slide then overlays quite a few items here, so that you can see it all in perspective. What you have here are the actual revenues that are coming in and the expenses. This does not include the transfers either in or out of the general fund, because we didn't, we only budget for those once on the expenditure side versus on both sides. But when you look at the revenues and you look at the expenses, you can see every year we're mindful of ensuring that we are spending within our available revenue stream. Additionally, that's what's helped us, then, to accomplish that unassigned fund balance that you see depicted by the light blue line. The minimum fund balance by policy is then the, the green line that you see down below, and that, again, is that minimum fund balance, that, that 25% of the operating expenses plus the annual required debt service payment. So it's really the amount in between those two items where the council has the flexibility. Per our previous discussions, council had said that we wanted to maintain a healthy fund balance to allow us to, to fully fund our repair and replacement funds, to prepare to meet some council initiatives. And some of that you'll see as we close out fiscal year 15. You see this through at fiscal year 14. But fiscal year 15 was pretty notable in terms of utilizing some of those fund balance. Having fund balance in places, council knows, allowed us to take advantage of opportunities in terms of land purchasing, in terms of some capital projects that came up in the downtown area that were unanticipated, as well as allowing us to, to pay for some of the improvements for St. Xavier in advance, saving on the interest rates over the long term. So the bond sale that we had today will reimburse the general fund for those expenditures, as well as any lost interest opportunity costs, but we were able to save on the, on the total interest of, over the life of the bonds. Correct. Well, so Councilmember Daniels had just mentioned about paying off the bonds early. What it allowed us to do was ensure that we sold the bonds much closer to the time that St. Xavier would open, be open and operating and, and prepared to make those lease payments.
I just meant the ones that we paid off.
Yes, we were absolutely able to use fund balance in the respective funds. So in that particular case, we had, we had used the utility funds to pay off the water So a couple of questions related to fund balance. Additionally, within our financial policies, council adopted a contingency policy that says, whatever fund balance that we have above and beyond the minimum would be budgeted that next fiscal year, so that council could, through its, through council actions, allocate that contingency for opportunities and emergencies that might occur throughout the fiscal year. So in terms of contingency, there are a few different considerations. We do look at economic development. We have the $5 million economic development reserve. If there were things outside of that that the council wanted to do, that is certainly an opportunity that the council has. But this has allowed us to address things that have come up, such as the census, and making sure that we were prepared to address situations related to the state budget. This also, because we. This also, because we do budget in a very conservative fashion, and we were able to address risk aversion and those types of things as well. And then finally, as we worked with our bond rating agencies, this was something that they were very impressed by, the ability for council to have, first of all, the fund balance that we had above and beyond, and, second of all, the council's policy on budgeting for contingency to ensure that you were able to respond to those needs without violating any of the financial policies. So with that, as we continue to move forward, Councilmember Cook has some items for discussion, and I'll turn it over to him. A couple of considerations that he had discussed as well was recognizing everything that helped to get us to that AAA rating, the fact that that's a reflection of strong management practices and financial management practices, leadership by the council, but also a reflection of the community as a whole, both our citizens and our business community. As we move forward, we have opportunities, as we should, to revise our financial policies, to look at our revenue structures, and to do so in a manner that maintains our policies, that maintains our creditworthiness, and it helps us to plan for the future and with a long-term interest in mind. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Councilmember Cook.
Well, I think we need a round of applause for Don and her department. It's just unbelievable. So thank you. And, you know, I cannot express a greater joy to the council and to Patrick and the leadership. When we started, at least the new team, as I look at it, when I started almost nearly four years ago, and the state of the town versus today, the transformation of local government is unbelievable. And I cannot express the thanks and the gratitude of our one team that we have to get us to where we're at, and all the things that Don has shared with us today. I mean, it's literally a textbook story of how to turn around government. It's the things that we're doing correctly, the things that we're prioritizing, the strategic plans that we put in place, the best practices from, you know, from business and corporate America that's being applied. It is truly a wonderful journey to be part of this team, and I couldn't thank everyone enough for that. But with that, I've been working with Don and the team for a while, knowing that we would be implementing our next zero-based, priority-based budgeting process, which we know is very grueling and painful. And the teams have done a lot of work and just a lot of effort in knowing what it takes to run the business and the lowest cost to run those businesses based upon those 200-plus lines of services. And through working with Don for a number of weeks, a number of months, trying to understand really about if there are certain dials and certain levels as it relates to revenue. Now, I'm not talking about changing the expenses. I'm just looking at the revenue. She shared with you from our unrestricted funds that you see that were just north of $60 million and how it's been increasing over the last, you know, three years. What I'd like to share with you is a document that I circulated to Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Ray to get this particular topic on the study session and to a future council meeting. And the most important part of this discussion is that I'm not here to propose anything that will hurt the business. The business, to me, is the most important part, that we maintain all the things that Don has shared, that it doesn't disrupt that. So what I share with you is protecting all of that we've done, and never to go backwards, but to go forward. So anyways, at the last council meeting, I submitted, I proposed this, and had Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Ray sign off on this. And the only change that's on here is actually the May 30 date is now going to be June 4, which would be in alignment when we finalize the budget. So that's the only date change that's here. So the thought here is, can we go to that wonderful slide that you made? Well, there's lots of slides. So the thought was, in working with Don and the team, we have a number of different things related to revenue as we bring the dollars in. There's numbers of categories and buckets, as I would call them. And one of the things was try to design a dashboard. If you were to turn a dial a little bit or a lever a little, adjust a lever, what is the impact to that financially? And that is an unbelievably extremely complicated dashboard to create. So I asked, well, how about if we look at reducing our taxes by a small amount, $240,000, which would basically be a dollar per resident? What does that do? So I go to this chart here, and this chart really doesn't have any meaning to any real value, other than just a discussion chart. So we know that we are in a growth part of our history in Gilbert, and I foresee that growth continuing on for another 10 years, maybe 20 years. And that rate of growth, which is the bottom line, again, it's just a representation of that. The line above the growth rate is a revenue line. And again, you know, the goal would be that if we had great forecasting tools in our business, we would like to have, as Patrick would say, a good steady-state model, where the red line and a blue line would be basically parallel. And the only question is that how far of a separation is that blue line and red line need to be? And that could be, you know, millions of dollars, or it could be hundreds of thousands, who knows? But again, it's just for discussion purposes. And the blue line, which is the revenue rate, I would say is actually not parallel with the rate of growth line today. I think it may be a little bit more higher as it relates to the slope. But again, we don't know that. At least I feel, in talking with Don, that the line is not negative and pointing the other direction. At least we're doing parallel or better as it relates to the revenue number. So my discussion with the council as it relates to proposal is that I believe that we're at a point in our history that we can tweak some of these dials. And I throw out the $240,000 is not really, I know Cindy is having a hard time with that number. The number may be only $150,000, or the number could be $500,000. I don't know what it is. But there's some number where I believe that we might agree as a team to lessen the amount of revenue that we bring in. Because as you looked at her charts, those are some good revenue numbers that we've brought in, and we have some extra that have been applied to our unrestricted, is that the right term? Pot of gold that we have. But anyways, I share this with you as a discussion, that I believe that if we make a small tweak, it goes back to making a course change on an ocean liner. And as we know, when we turn a big ocean liner and make a course adjustments, I like to make a small course adjustment and see where it goes. Because I don't know what $240,000 does to our business as it relates to a course change, but I believe we have an opportunity to make a tiny course change that actually is a benefit to our residents and our businesses with that. And that $240,000 represents about 0.2% of our general fund. I believe it's not a significant impact to the business, because remember, the business is important. But I throw this out as a discussion, that on June 4, I would entertain that staff go back to provide us options. I mean, one of the options that we've been toiling around with is that there are a couple categories that we may even eliminate that might be in the $100,000 range, that, again, doesn't provide a big significant impact to the business. But again, I like to propose that we give staff an opportunity to go back and look at certain dials and levers, come back to the council with some ideas. And again, it doesn't have to be $240,000, I just leave it up there as a kind of a number, because it represents $1 per resident. But I share this with you with hopes that we'll have a great discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Don, I understand you've accepted the assignment. Thank you. And who knows, maybe you'll come back on June 4 with a proposal for future cruises for Gilbert residents. Now, did you have anything else, Don? To the council, we do have another meeting, and so let me talk strategy on five, let's see, six, seven, and eight. I think, and Town Manager Banjo, you can help me on six. Six is an update of our recent summit, which really focused back to our needs assessment. It was priority two. And the mental health and substance abuse treatment, that'll be nice for the council to hear, so the public can hear too. Because that's not really impacting our discussion about the nonprofits, I think we can press the pause button and remove that one. Would that be okay?
Yes.
On agenda item seven, I believe it would be helpful, because we had a lot of emails from residents, to at least have the executive summary of number seven, and then number eight, we might just have a couple of minutes of dialogue and still have number eight remain. So what I would suggest is we still, we move to number seven right now and have executive summary.
Mayor, if I could suggest one thing, item number seven, the update on the Gilbert Railroad projects, is primarily informational. I didn't anticipate a lot of discussion on that. We could do that Thursday evening under the managers' update portion of the agenda, if you'd like.
One way.
Yeah, one way. But we didn't anticipate a lot of discussion. It's more informational, and I think it will make sense.
Councilmember Daniels, what was that?
Are there any residents here?
That's a good question. Are there any residents in the council chamber that came to hear about the railroad project? And I did, there were several, and there was probably to the council, too, that they planned on listening, and so we could spread the word that, I think that would work.
Okay.
Let's do that. On the number eight, without the presentation for the council to hear, as I have had a chance to talk to town leadership and many of you that are the liaisons to boards, I believe there's three boards, that there is some discussion, that we still want the overview, but we can press the pause button on that. And I guess the three, let me start with Councilmember Cook, the Energy, Environmental, Conservation Advisory Board, and maybe just for the council to be thinking about this, but do you want to make any comments about what you're seeing with the board and feedback you're receiving?
Yeah, I think where we're at in our journey with that team, and the team is unbelievably very skilled, with a lot of wonderful skills in that area. It seems to me that it may be better where we keep them on retainer and use them on an as-needed basis. When we get to the point where those areas come up for the council for discussion, they provide tremendous amount of expertise in that. It's hard when we're not utilizing that team, and again, that would be kind of a discussion with that.
When is their next meeting?
Andy could share that with us.
And while Andy's coming up, if we did go that direction, does the council need to approve pressing, and I don't know if the word would be sunset, disband, or move them into a stakeholder group?
Mike, you just have to check if that's an ordinance that established them, or if it's, I don't think it's policy. We'd have to double-check that.
Okay. And so, Andy, the next meeting is?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Cook, the ECAAB does not have a meeting scheduled. That last year, we decided to just have four meetings this year to evaluate their workload and what they were looking at in terms of policy and recommendations, so they do not have any future meetings scheduled.
Thank you. All right. The second board was the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board, and I think the discussion there has been possibly to take out tourism and allow that to become a stakeholders group, and the ACT group would focus more on the arts and culture. And I don't know if there's discussion on that tonight, or just to say that's something that's being discussed. And that is council, is that Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we press the pause button on that, so he could be here for that discussion, but at least you heard it? And then, Councilmember Taylor, I know on the Human Resource Commission, any quick feedback you wanted to give?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just share with the council, so Human Relations Commission has nine plus an alternate. There's currently five active members due to some attrition. And in the past, it made a lot of sense to have a large number like that, because they had active role in, like, Global Village, the MLK events. Those two have gone into parks and are supported in that way in some of our 10 signature events. And this year, they've been working a lot on the needs assessment and giving feedback on the nonprofit funding that we just saw. As I look at, you know, going forward, what, you know, what the workload is, it's significantly less than what it was in the past. And so I thought that, you know, I've been thinking about what, you know, similar, what is the future and what should we? And really, two things really have kind of kicked around. One is, you know, maybe put it on a moratorium status, or an as-need basis, however we word that, or move it to a quarterly. Where I'm at right now on that one, just as a way of recommendation, is quarterly, but maybe reducing the numbers of the people that are there, because I think the, you know, small group can deal with the issues that are coming before them right now. And so maybe leaving the others unseated, or if we want to change the actual number. But anyways, Mayor, that's really the summary.
And that might be, similar question to Town Attorney on the Human Resource Commission, we've got nine and an alternate. And one question, if we were to change, reduce the numbers a little bit, because we do have various openings, do we need to have that as a council agenda item, or can it just happen? And then if we move to...
I was just consulting with the Town Attorney, Mike. They're in the code, and it specifies the term and number, so you'd have to adjust that.
Okay. And so, from Councilmember Taylor's comments, I think would be the two things to present to council for public discussion, too, is one, to take the numbers from nine, would it be to seven, or to five, or what would you?
I like where it is right now with five active, you know, involved, committed, and maybe an alternate.
And then to move to quarterly meetings.
Quarterly meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you, just for direction to staff, do you want to specify in the code quarterly meetings, or do you want to leave it more flexible? I mean, I guess I'd defer to Mike on how you want to approach that.
Mayor, members of the council, that could be done in either way, but it can be drafted flexibly. You know, meet at these times, or meet when called by the chairman, you know, no more than twice a year, or four times a year, or no fewer than two times a year.
Would seem, the more flexibility, the better. Would be my opinion. All right, thank you.
Mayor, could I comment?
Please.
I would advise to not seat those empty seats, just because if we're going to make them less active, it doesn't make sense to bring in new people. So I would recommend what Councilmember Taylor said, is just to keep them at the small number that they're at currently. And then if we see more of a need in the future, then we reactivate and bring in more members, if needed.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I believe pending this conversation, they are on hold. We are not recruiting Lisa for any of those Human Relations Commission seats currently. So they are on hold right now.
Thank you. That's what I would recommend, if possible.
Thank you. Taking one more minute, and then we will adjourn and move on to our next meeting tonight. This happened this afternoon, so to Town Manager Banjo, this will be new information for you, and I'll pass this on to our Town Attorney. Congressman Salmon's office organized a meeting this afternoon. We had heard that the City of Mesa had some additional vouchers that could be used to serve veterans, homeless veterans, and so Congressman Salmon's office organized a meeting in order for the other municipalities in Congressman Salmon's district, which was Crane Creek and Chandler and Gilbert, to use those vouchers if we came across a homeless veteran. veteran. We'd need to go through Mason, so they are preparing an IGA, and to our Town Attorney, this is a draft of it. The Mesa City Council would have to approve it first, and then it could come back to the other three municipalities. So I'll just give it to you to look at, and that's an FYI of something that our council can consider if the City of Mesa approves it first. Thank you for your attendance at the study session. This meeting adjourned, and we are meeting up in room 233 with our, is it 300? Room 300 for our next meeting. Thank you.